The results.
Yeah.
To, I call the Thursday, July 13th meeting of the Audit Committee to order at 5:01 PM. Our agenda is to, you know, first review the agenda, prove the minutes, and then in looking at the work plan. Please carry on. Anybody have any comments on the agenda itself?
Wasn't there going to be a discussion of the CPA position as well?
Well, that seems to have become moot on account of there aren't any.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So we should talk about that. But yeah, go ahead. That's my only comment.
Can you hang on one second while I close the front door? Okay.
Of course we can.
Thank you. Okay, Zoom meetings, always fun. Um. Hang on. Okay, I am looking for my agenda. And it's, I have an email that tells me the email is attached, that the agenda is attached.
Well, the first action item is to approve the meeting minutes from April 24th.
Okay.
No, May 22.
Yeah. The May 22 meetings, the memo re-evidence room testing, the work plan and the agenda. So all of these. Christine, you say they are attached, but I am not seeing them. Ah. Ta-da. Nope. All I got is the preliminary parcels.
That's a different email.
Yeah, there we go. Okay. Hi. Really apologize for having a dog. Okay, so does anyone have any queries about the May 22nd, 2023 meeting minutes? No? Okay, cool. Jenny and Christine, if necessary, can you update us on the Police Department Evidence Room Testing Agenda Item 3A?
B.
So Christine and I went over, I mean, the memo is attached. Let me go down to that. We went over on June 6 and tested some items. We go from the system to make sure that the items are in the room, and then we select some items from the room and make sure that they're in the system. And everything went just fine. We didn't have any issues. The facility looked organized and clean and properly secured, so. That was it. It's something that we do annually, and it was no problem whatsoever. Any questions?
Yeah, that was my question. Does anyone have any questions? Nope. Okay. Then let us move on to Agenda Item 3B, an update on potential surplus property review. Before you begin, Jenny, has everyone had an opportunity to look at the 33 parcels? Okay.
Well, there's 30, there's 31 in the list I'm looking at, so.
Right.
Hang on.
Okay.
It's the most, it's the one that I sent out yesterday.
It's, yeah, it's the preliminary potential sites that you sent yesterday. That's that separate email you were looking at, Anna.
Yeah, I have that one, and I've saved it as Excel, so it goes from 11 to 43, which is 32 parcels. Are some of them doubled?
No, there's a header row, so it's 31.
Okay, I really not going to stop and discuss that. 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20, 21, 22, 23, 24, 25, 26, 27, 28, 29, 30, 31, 32, 33, et cetera. Mine goes to 43. We have 19, 23, and 122 on line 13.
I think you're looking at a list that I provided you last week.
Not the most recent one?
Correct. So that would have 33 parcels on it.
Okay.
But after Christine and I did a site visit of all the parcels that are on that list, I removed two.
Okay. Then I'll just, everyone has received it, and everyone except me has looked at the most recent available that was sent to us. Okay, please carry on, Jenny, because I'm just going to keep digging until I find this.
I sent it yesterday if you're looking for that.
Yeah. Yeah, please carry on.
So this is a preliminary list. A lot of times I, I don't want to provide preliminary lists just because I don't want people to get too excited about them, because the work is still underway. So like the list that I provided to Anna last week, one of the parcels turned out to be a park that the city owns, and you know, obviously that shouldn't be on the list, so I removed it.
The one on Pacific?
No, no, the one on Pacific is still on the list. I don't think it's an official park. You know, so people can decide what they want to do with that one.
Yeah.
But.
Please go on.
So anyway, we've, Christine and I went out this week and went to all of these sites just so that, you know, you can look all you want on paper and even the aerial views, but when you actually go and see the site, you can see some other things. So anyway, we did that this week, and then our next step is to meet with directors or contact directors that have responsibility for these parcels and find out, you know, maybe there's reasons why they would not be appropriate for affordable housing in any in any way, you know, so either for affordable housing on its own, or to be sold as surplus property, and then the funding could be used for affordable housing, or, you know, maybe some other use that I haven't thought of. But, you know, some of these are likely to be not available for affordable housing in any way. For example, the first one says that it's the site of reservoirs 15 and 18. So it has two reservoirs on it, but it's a nine-acre piece of property, you know, is there room for housing there? I don't know the answer to that yet, but that's what this list is about. So the second one down is 2.7 acres of waterfront property that is, some of it appears to be a little bit of a park, and then some of it appears that it it had been used for park storage, but maybe it looks like they're clinging it up, and I don't know what their plan is for that, but it's a, it doesn't seem like a good use of, you know, storage, doesn't seem like a good use of waterfront property. So just, I have to get more information about each of these. The third one down, and I don't, it wasn't necessarily my plan to go through all of these, although I could, you know, make a quick run through all of them if that's what the committee would like. But the third one down is, I don't know if folks are familiar with this, but it's almost 10 acres of property that the engineers, they had a building there, and then some other facilities were also there, so SOG, actually, probably shouldn't comment on that, but you know, there were other facilities there. And and they're no longer there. Christine, is that the one that we thought that parks might be putting some of their equipment over there now? Are you there, Christine?
Yes, so you're referring to the Olympus Building that formerly had, I think, engineering and utility billing and water resources. And yeah, it appeared that there was possible city equipment besides public works equipment over there.
That's the site that Denise has been trying to make into a park. It's currently being used as a park informally. Quinn, you're familiar with this property?
Oh, the area that has the picnic benches, Jenny, that has the radio tower downhill.
Right, so, right, so there is the portion that is, as Anna said, kind of an informal park. It, it looks nice, you know, and has a few picnic tables, but then there's the section that has buildings on it. You know, that used to be offices for the engineers, and I, I've been in that building. Christine, I think you've been in it more than I have, but I think it's a two or three-story building. You know, I mean, I don't know.
Building, yeah.
Two? Anyway. I mean, I think that for every parcel that we look at, there's probably going to be a competing priority. And that's what the council members, I guess, and administration, I don't know, that's what you folks have to decide what the priority is, you know, I'm going to identify the properties and find out what they're being used for, and if I can understand more about what the plan, the current considerations are for the property, I'll articulate that, but I think there will always be a competing, some, some other priority that competes for it, and who wins the the use of the parcel is to be seen.
I was really excited about the lots you found at 12th and Warren. There's four.
Right.
That.
Yeah, so those are, you want me to jump to those?
No, I'm sorry, I've been running around all day and haven't had enough coffee, and I'm interrupting you, and I truly beg your pardon. Please go on.
Okay. Tracey Ten has 41 acres. It's wooded. There is, in the very middle of the parcel, I mean, 41 acres is big. In the middle, there's a small parcel. I don't know what size it is, maybe it's an acre or two. And there's a reservoir there, but it's surrounded by 40 acres. You know, do we need all 40 acres for this reservoir? And I don't know the answer to that. Again, it's my plan to ask the directors about these parcels and why they, you know, can or cannot have other uses than what they're currently being used for. Anyway. The sixth item, I'm going to skip Hayward, just it's, oh, no, actually, that's a good one to talk about, 1628 Hayward. This used to be a reservoir, and it's now covered with asphalt. And it looks like a great site for development. It's on the top of the hill in Minnet.
And I can add a little texture here if I may.
Yes.
The last time the city wanted to develop that, the neighborhood got pretty exercised about it, because it's been a place where kids learn to ride their bikes, and any development would block views of several homes. And anyway, the Minnet Neighborhood Coalition was partly formed around this issue, so I'm just warning to maybe expect some pushback. But I agree, does seem to be ripe.
Well, and, you know, we don't know if there's restrictions for developing on a site that used to be a reservoir.
Well, I would think that, that the city might have to do something with what's under the lid, because right now it's just a lid over the, over the reservoir.
Who is speaking?
This is Deborah.
I think Deborah's frozen.
Okay, excellent. Thank you.
I had the same thoughts.
Okay.
Okay. That was all.
Okay.
Before we go on, can we promote Marwan to panelist? He doesn't seem to be in the list of panelists. Perhaps then he will become visible.
Did you want me to continue on while someone's working on that? Well, I, I am going to continue on. Someone can stop me if they want me to wait, but the next one is by the ice rink. There's a couple of acres. I know that the properties where the ice rink and the YMCA are, that those have to be used for park purposes. This parcel is adjacent to those. It's possible that it also has to be used for park purposes. Right now is a dandelion field, but so it may be eliminated because it, it has to be a park. But there is other housing being developed right in that area. Okay, the next three, seven, eight, and nine, can people hear me?
Okay, that's odd.
Can people hear me?
Yes, but.
They can hear you. There sounds like a animal snoring or something as well.
It is.
Yeah.
If it's distracting, I can remove him from the room.
No, now that we know someone's not dying.
It's a Japanese kid. I could wake him up, but, okay. Uh, okay, so the next three, seven, eight, and nine, those are like right behind the wastewater treatment plant. They're in a housing development. But anyway, that may be the issue with those. And I do have, in column, it might not say on yours, in the far right column, I don't know if folks saw the comments that are over there. But I do list, you know, what the issues might be. You know, and I may learn that there are other issues, but, you know, being right by the wastewater treatment plant might be an issue. Okay, number 10 is another parcel that's adjacent to the 9.86 acres that were up in Item 3. So it's another 1.76 acres right there that's I think it's being used as an informal park. Number 11, I don't think that one's going to be viable. It's used for stormwater right now. I, I don't, I have a feeling that it's not going to be something that can be used for housing in any fashion, but it's still on the list. The property at the north end of Tahuya Lake. We were asked to see if we can find out why, you know, how it is that the city ended up with this parcel. We have not turned up anything, so we really don't know what happened. We can dig, we can dig a little bit deeper just by asking a couple people who have been around a while. They may have knowledge about it, but we don't know why at this point we have it. There's no documentation in our system that we could find in the archives. Anyway. We've talked about that parcel before. I don't know if there's anything else to say. The number 13, I could not find it in Finance Plus. I, I can still look a little bit more, but this parcel is almost one and a half acres. It's at Arsenal Way and Loxie Egan's Boulevard. It's actually in county. It's lands, but it's, I guess I'm unclear. It's Bremerton West Urban Growth Area. But I thought it looked like a good potential for affordable housing.
Is everyone familiar with the urban growth area? Yeah, anybody unfamiliar with it? Okay, carry on, please.
Okay. Another property, number 14, over by the wastewater treatment plant. Anderson Creek Watershed. It's zoned, it's not zoned for watershed. That's just how we have it listed as our use in the City of Bremerton Finance Plus system. But it's zoned for housing. It's over across from Land and Gardens. Okay, the next four are vacant lots on Warren, just north of 11th. I don't know what their use is. It's in a housing, you know, it's all a single-family housing right there. Does count, do the council members have any knowledge of what's going on with those parcels?
They're, they're actually between 12th and 13th. They are currently being used as like a really wide verge, like nothing. If I, if I remember correctly, I'll go look at it. They have to be, drive past it in an hour or so, but the use on the, because, I'm sorry, I got to interrupt the meeting here to go, what an incredibly great job the auditor and Christine have done. So on each one of these, when you click on it, it shows vacant land. When you click on the hyperlink, all, all these contiguous parcels are vacant, and they front on Warren, which is, actually should make it a, a, a good site for affordable housing. Transit opportunities, walking opportunities. Easy to, easy, even with our horrible multimodal bridge, it's, it's still pretty easy to get to East Bremerton from there. I think that's a real find. Anyhow, I'm going to stop talking because, you know, it's hard, but I can. Please go on, Jenny.
Okay. Next one. This is, so I'm at number 20 now. And this is the one that's at Pacific, 931 Pacific. And it's, Christine referred to it as a green space. It has a little little structure there. I forget what they call those. It's almost, sorry?
It has a sculpture there.
Sculpture, yes. And anyway, I don't think it's a viable piece. I don't think it's officially a park is the only thing. In which case, you know, you might be able to use it for housing, but I don't know.
Jenny, I can't hear you any longer.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, I'm sorry if I faded away. Okay, I'm going to move on to, let's see, the next two. Number 21 is over by that Arsenal and Loxie Egan's. It's not adjacent to it, but it's one parcel over. So it, and it's in a, you know, it's not too far from services, and it's in a housing development, older. So it might have potential. Number 22 is on the waterfront across from the YMCA property. It's just undeveloped, not being used. I don't know if it's something that could be sold. Oh, it looks like it has a small parking lot there, like a gravel parking lot, I think it was. Maybe it was paved up. But anyway, Christine wasn't sure if there's a lease for that, if we've leased that parking lot to a business to use, so we'll have to dig into that a little bit more to find out.
Didn't that come up in council, Christine? Melinda Monroe presented two, maybe three months ago. The business wanted to develop, and all they wanted to do was to improve the parking lot. It's on the south side of Wheaton Way. You are muted.
It's vaguely familiar, Chair. I'd have to look that up. I did note while we were on site, if I could add, that it appeared the business right next to that parking lot did have permits posted, like it's going to be undergoing some improvement. So they will be going in there, but I, I can look up the status of that.
Okay, I, I'm pretty sure about it, because, you know, I was being nosy or diligent, you know, pick your adjective. So I drove over there right after the meeting and saw the permits posted in the lower right-hand corner of the window and looked at the parking lot. Anyhow.
Okay. Number 23. This is on Highway 3. And it's near the drive-in. It's 39 acres. I think that I'm, I'm not sure what the land is being held for. But it it might be farther away than folks would prefer for affordable housing. 1201 Oyster Bay. Oh, this one was behind the dealership, kind of in the wastewater treatment plant area. 25 is on Highway 3, across the street from Brothers Nursery, if folks are familiar with that. It's another very large wooded parcel, 29 acres. Number 26 is 105 acres across Highway 16 from a land in Gardens. The assessor's website, I couldn't find this in Finance Plus. It just might have a different parcel number or something, so I need, I need to see if I can track it down. But the assessor site says that it's used for water systems.
Isn't that really steep as well? Or am I misremembering?
Well, there is a hill there. So I'm not sure if you're thinking it's too steep to develop. I mean, there's development up there.
Yeah. Okay, I may be thinking of a different spot, because there's places along that road near there where it starts to slide every year during the rainy season, so we'd want to.
I don't know, it's heavily wooded, so I don't.
Yeah. Okay.
I'm not sure.
Yeah.
The next one is in the same vicinity, 82 acres off of Anderson Hill Road. Oh, it's adjacent to a newer housing development. So it's the housing development ends, and then, then it's our wooded acreage. So it's kind of it's not McCormick Woods, but it's kind of heading out towards that ways. The way I can describe it. Number 28. The city shows it in the system as The city shows it in the system as Bremerton Watershed, but it's actually zoned as city utility lands, which there is a big difference. On the uses that you can have for it. This is over by the Square Dance Facility in Gorst. And it's adjacent to single-family housing. But. There is a power line that runs. I couldn't tell if it's actually running through the property, maybe partway through the property and then, you know, because it's fifteen acres. As you can tell, there's issues with many of these, but. We don't know yet if they're. Issues that would prevent housing. Or prevent selling a parcel to have funding for housing. This is another lot. At Eleventh and Warren. Number twenty-nine.
I beg your pardon, so there are five altogether. That's great.
I'd have to double check that. There's five parcel numbers.
Yeah, I checked. Sorry to. Please go on.
Okay, so two left. Well, this was. Do folks, well, I'm gonna assume that you know where the Oyster Bay Public Works facility is. This is a parcel that's adjacent to the north. Why didn't write down the acreage? I, I'm gonna guess that it's in between an acre and an acre and a half. It's wooded. I think that Public Works, I've heard that they. Have been talking about using the. Parcel for something. But they haven't done so yet.
Public Works plans to expand their facility into that lot, which is immediately to the, to the. To the north of them. But they are waiting until the wastewater. Work is done along Oyster Bay Avenue so that they don't have to do it twice. This is the land, Quinn, that I was talking about last night. As being a possible suitable location. Being located near to transit and services. So. Yeah, please go on, Jenny. Thank you.
Okay, this other one is out, the last one is out by Pendergast Park. And. Uh, like. Another one that I talked about, it's, you know, the housing development ends and then there's this parcel. Gosh darn it, why didn't I write down the acreage on this? It's sizable, you know, it's a couple acres anyway. But it's adjacent to a neighborhood of homes that were, I think the development was created in or built in twenty-twenty-one.
Well, Wright Creek runs smack dab down the middle of that.
Oh, a creek does?
Yeah, it's called Wright Creek. Yeah, uh, immediately nor, I, I, I walk this all the time. Immediately north of it is a series of pleistocene wetlands with beaver dams and otters and herons. And then immediately south of Watershed Road here. The creek forms, uh, the beavers are no longer active and it's a normal. Creek-looking creek.
Well, if I recall, the. The housing development is. South. Parcel. And then north of the parcel is owned by a developer. So.
Okay, i- if the map that I'm looking at has north, which I think it does. All of the land on, the undeveloped land on either side of Sinclair Way. That's all Wright Creek Business. Um, there's one property that's. Actually been developed and they're using it for some kind of industrial trucks come and go. But all of the rest of them have signs saying Wright Creek Business Park. Immediately north of Watershed Road is our reservoir. Three or four, I'm so sorry, that I believe we're only using for stormwater anyhow. But I, I'm just mentioning that this about zero-one-three dash zero-zero. That Wright Creek does run smack down the middle of it.
I do see something dark on that. Buckingham Properties is, and I was wrong, I was trying to go from memory of. Parcels are situated, it's actually to the west. That Buckingham Properties owns a. Very large. Parcel.
Yeah. Jenny, you're cutting out again, please.
A hundred and sixty-five acres. The parcel, the parcel that Buckingham Properties owns that's. Adjacent to the west.
The story on the street is they bought that for five hundred thousand. I don't know if it's true or not, but it's sure a good story.
Well, I can tell you now. Well. Shooting from the hip here, but, uh, looking at the documentation online. In twenty-fifteen, somebody purchased, I'm, I'm not gonna dig any further, but for about two and a half million.
The whole hundred and sixty-five acres?
Well, for that parcel.
Okay. Parcel three zero zero seven? Is that the one you're talking about? All right, well, that's a much more feasible story, but less romantic than the one I've heard.
I'm sorry.
No, that's okay, I'd rather have the fact. Okay. Quinn. I'm sorry, let me do this correctly. Deborah, Quinn, Marwan, have you any questions, comments? Urgings? Yeah, please, Quinn, please go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. Um, yeah, I just wanna say thank you so much to Christine. None of this is so comprehensive and the fact that you guys. Physically went to the parcels is just above and beyond. Um, so thank you so much, that's amazing. I don't know if this is a question for Chair Mokler or Christine or Vice Chair, uh, McDaniel's, but. Who has the authority, do we know to like authorize the sale? Or the use of a particular parcel? I would assume that it's. I would assume it's council, right? Because we're, we would be, no, it's not, sorry. I saw some up and downs. Go ahead, Christine, sorry.
I just wanted to add that if, if land is parks land. Those issues do go through the Parks Commission. They have to vet out. Issues and make recommendations. And then if they give a green light for it to come back to council. For a potential sale. There's a process that that follows and then ultimately a vote by council would have to be unanimous. But it is a lengthy public process to surplus. Parkland. Exception is the property by the YMCA because. Some of those have restrictions where we cannot, we, we can only use it for parkland and in perpetuity. For certain parts of that parcel. And then if it's utility land, that has a separate flight path, but. Yeah, it's. It's involved.
I would assume that there was some mechanism, so, and again, try and. Educate me if I'm completely off base, like the, the most. I think like economic, best economic use of like all of these parcels would be to. Possibly with the correct mechanisms, sell these large acres, kind of like out at Tohoya by the. Drive-in, these kind of ninety-three, these hundred and blah. You know, X amount of acres and then use that money to fund the parcels that. Chair Mokler was talking about that would actually put affordable housing in the urban. Districts close to transit, make sure, you know, we're not just creating. You know, the, these spaces far away from all the resources, that, that's kind of the idea, right? That everybody's on. I just, I just wanna make sure I'm understanding the whole process.
And that's where the auditor was, was going, that we have to vet these through the departments to make sure that. Our certain use is allowed and if property were potentially surplus, are there any restrictions on where that money could go? Maybe it can't be used for urban housing, maybe it can. So there's a lot of questions tied to each of these and maybe we'll, you know, in that path with the departments. Maybe they'll. Maybe they have some ideas or suggestions, you know, that might. Go in line with these, but.
Excellent. Thank you for, for just confirming that. Just wanted to make sure I was understanding the process. Yeah, I, I, that, that's all for me. Just again, thank you so much. This is. So extremely helpful, especially with the, the conversation that's going on with council right now. This is, this is really great.
Well, I do think. I'll piggyback on what Christine was talking about, that. Some of the earlier conversations that we had within Audit Committee was that, you know, the city of Bremerton was looking at. How it might partner with other agencies, so. It wouldn't necessarily be that, you know, we sell land so that we can. Bu- and sell land to fund the housing and donate the parcels, you know, so. It can be a combination of things. I mean, that's. Audit Committee for the auditor has not been tasked with deciding how it should be played out, that. In my mind, that's council's job, or council and. Mayor, I think it's mainly council, I'm not sure, but it's, I wouldn't think it's my job.
Yeah, and just to jump back in there, yeah, I would, I would assume that the idea is to. If we were gonna sell any property, use that as like a private public partnership with nonprofits that. Can actually leverage that money, but. Thanks for clarifying that.
That's kind of what I was thinking about the Manette. It's in a pretty nice neighborhood. I wouldn't think that you would. Mix an affordable housing project in, you know, on the summit of the hill in Manette. You know, so I'm, I'm.
Why not?
Yeah, that honestly, what a, what a great place for it. Yeah, and, and we need to talk with the Manette Association, of course, um, but, but I love that Mills Creek or Mills Crossing, yeah, is like. A beautiful area and close to, close to everything and, you know, that's, that's what social science data backs up is, is making sure that there's. Mixed income neighborhoods, that's the healthiest for societies. So I'm not opposed. I'll, I'll say that on.
Yeah, I'm not opposed. It's just. Generally, you see more consistent, well, whatever, that's not for me to decide, as I said.
Yeah, I concur, Jenny. I think that. Your task was given to find the parcels. Determine usage, allowed usage through interrogation, interviews. And then present and let council go from there. And what, what Quinn said about your hard work, awesome as usual, both of you. Thank you.
Marwan, are you able to speak or just type into chat? Okay. Deborah, did you have anything more you wanted to say?
Nothing further, nothing further, no, thanks.
Okay. All he can do is chat. It is extremely disruptive here.
You see that.
I don't know what that means, but.
He's setting up for an event at Marwan Williams.
Well, I'm sorry that. Sorry to hear that. Christine, I, I guess this is a question for you, but really for all of us, I guess. It's my understanding that council can, for example, determine that something shall be done. But that only the mayor can actually do it. Like, we can determine that ten thousand dollars should be set aside for a port of sound, but. Only the mayor can actually spend that money. So is that true of the sale of land? Should it be found to be free of liens and encumbrances, et cetera?
I, I would think that legal would need to jump in on that maybe.
Yeah, I think you're right.
Okay. Um, okay. I think you went, sorry, English needs a second person plural. I think use. You guys, or y'all, whichever you prefer. Went above and beyond, just looking at the amount of work done. Between the version that I had and was mistakenly working from at the beginning of this meeting and the version that we have now. This is something that. It, it not only lets a department head. Decide if they're already using it for something, you know, and like this is utility land, it can't be touched. But it also gives council and any future planning body. The ability to say, wait a second, why do we have all of these things marked freeway corridor? Or wait a second, are these reservoirs actually sacrosanct? Can development occur around them? And the way you have amassed and presented this information is gonna be a treasure for decades to come. It's just. Pretty good job.
Glad you like it.
Heck yeah. Okay.
So we're, we're planning to just, uh, just to kind of wrap up the conversation unless there's more from you folks, but, you know, we're planning to. Proceed then with contacting the directors and getting a little more information. And then we can issue a report or, you know, we can touch base on that. Are, are you expecting a report? Are you just wanting the spreadsheet or what are you thinking?
Deborah, Quinn, Marwan?
Jenny, I think, as always, you do a good job with a little bit of narrative. I think the report might, after you've interviewed everyone. Your annotations on the sheet we were looking at tonight will tell most of the story, but I think. Like a one-page brief of what people are about to look at. Little bit of narrative to give it some context is probably a good idea. But I wouldn't. Me personally, I wouldn't write like ten pages and then the spreadsheet. I think the spreadsheet. Tells a lot in very few words, the spreadsheet and attendant maps. So yeah, just a little bit of narrative to give some texture as to how you got there, who you talked to, da-da-da.
Okay.
There kind of a consensus on that, or did anyone else have thoughts?
You're okay with that? Always happy to see your writing, Jenny. Respect to Deborah for having known you for so many years and for calling that out. Thank you. Okay. So. Our next meeting is August twenty-eighth. Um, I'll be making my net, oh, sorry, I'm doing the agenda out of, starting from the bottom up, I beg your pardon. Okay, so. Other matters, uh, agenda item four A, the work plan, the department budget.
Okay, so we include the work plan just as a matter of course. It doesn't necessarily mean that there's anything that needs to be discussed unless someone wanted to discuss it, otherwise.
You're cutting in and out again, Jenny.
I'm sorry, I don't know why that is. Anyway, there wasn't anything on our minds in terms of the, but, uh, the work plan, but if anyone else wanted to discuss it. It's here and it's an agenda item.
What, uh, what is up next? I noticed that the next item listed on the work plan is the landlord and license compliance and you. You need that objective to be clarified, so. If you don't get that. What's next?
Has it not been clarified? Um, I brought that to this, to this meeting, I thought.
Well, it says in the status column, which is right in the center. Well, it says in the status column, which is right in the center, it says that it's the next planned project. So, I don't remember off the top of my head, but I'm assuming that that is what have been decided.
Okay.
So if anyone wanted to uh re-priori- re-prioritize, that could be done. I think that I'm good through, uh, because I do have vacation coming up too. I think I'm good until our next meeting.
Okay.
But I I think people should be thinking of the um, work plan for the next meeting if you want to change.
You cut out again.
If you want to change anything in terms of the priority on the work plan, I would suggest that you be thinking about that for our next meeting.
Okay. I'm, the more issues that have been flying at council's head recently, the more I think um, the landlord license list is, is not just a bureaucratic exercise, but a way to assure tenants and the neighbors of those tenants um, have a habitable home and um, a quiet, peaceable. Yeah. I'm just going to assume that Marwan cannot will comment by chat if he can and that he won't if he can't. Um, department budget, I don't know exactly what that refers to, but please carry on.
I don't see that on my agenda. Am I looking at the wrong agenda?
A, other matters.
I have a four A CPA position, status of outreach.
Deb, I think that you have an old agenda because your minutes were for approving the minutes were from the April meeting and we approved the minutes.
Okay, oh, excuse me, yes, now I see it. No, I don't, huh, okay, weird. All right. Yeah, I don't know about the budget either, go ahead.
Okay, so the budget, um, we didn't send it out, but I, I don't think that should be a problem, but we can send it out if you want to see it. In twenty twenty-three, our budget was uh just under a hundred and forty-three thousand. And currently, we may be tweaking this a little bit, but currently our budget is just over a hundred and forty-five thousand for twenty twenty-four. So it increased a couple thousand dollars. And that's primarily, I think, just uh, coal on wages, you know, cost of living adjustment, and some very minor changes. So uh, if the, what I would propose is that the committee approve the hundred and forty-five thousand dollar budget, it's actually one forty-five, three thirty-eight. If you approve that, subject to some minor tweaking that we may have, you know, I don't think it will swing more than a thousand dollars is my guess. Um, but if you want to approve it based on that, knowing that it could have a minor change, then uh, that's what I would suggest.
Are you talking about our approving it in November?
This is approving our proposed budget tonight.
For twenty twenty-four.
For twenty twenty-four. So we have the numbers, they were presented by Karen, the budget analyst.
To?
To Christine and I.
Ah, okay.
And then um, we didn't realize the timing of it and we actually forgot that the committee has to approve it because they didn't use to approve it.
Yeah, this is all new to me, okay, okay.
So, anyway, it's in the bylaws that you approve the budget. We would have included it in the packet if we realized it, so it's on us that we didn't send it to you. We could send it to you right now if you want it.
I'd like to at least just have it, um. I guess the only comment I have on approving it is is this your way of saying you don't want any more hours? We're someone to find it in the budget to get you more.
I'm perfectly happy with, I'm perfectly happy with what I have.
Okay. I just wanted clarity on that, thanks. Yeah, if I could, Christine, if you could just shoot me a copy, that'd be great. And I'm, I'm fine with approving it on your say-so, Jenny. We probably need a formal motion, huh?
Is this something that, after you?
Christine, it should go out in a PDF, just.
I'm locked out of my files right now, so I'll have to um, Jenny, can you send it? I mean, I'm literally hosting the meeting.
Did you, did you want it right now, Deb?
Um, no, anytime is fine.
I was thinking we would be sending it after the meeting. I mean, you, we can make it contingent that after everyone receives it, that, you know, if you don't like it and you have problems with it or questions that you want to have answered, we can but it's, it's due to finance on, I think it's July twenty-seventh, so it's going to be before our next meeting.
Yeah. Yeah, so, I mean.
Let me, let me see if I can.
Can you share it on your screen?
I'm going to call a three-minute break while the technical, technicalities of this are done and the emails are sent. Okay, so Christine, you don't have to host the meeting. You can send out the email and we will reconvene at six, it's now five fifty-eight, we will reconvene at six oh one. Quinn, can your question wait until after the recess? Okay, thank you. It being now, it is six oh two PM and the email having been sent, I called a Thursday, July thirteenth, meeting of the Audit Committee back to, back into session. Please, um, Vice President, Vice Chair McDaniel, please go ahead.
No, I just, I realize now what I was looking at. It's uh, I was looking at change from twenty-three amended and then change from twenty-two actuals were the the comment lines I was looking in twenty twenty-four. This. Yeah, yeah, this seems good to me.
And Chair, it looks like Quinn has his hands up.
Yeah.
Thanks, Christine.
Christine.
Christine, um, yeah.
Thank you, Quinn.
Didn't want to just jump in there. So just for my edification, this is kind of our committee department approval. That approval will get sent to the Finance Director. Finance Director will put it into the full budget for council approval. Is that where we're at with this? Okay, great. Thanks, thanks for sending that.
Um, Marwan, do you have any comments? We're looking in the chat. Okay, Marwan has no comments. Um, Marwan, can you indicate your approval or disapproval of our approving this budget in the chat? Can we approve it? Are you okay with that? Okay. Um, Vice Chair McDaniel, you're okay with approving this?
Yes, approve as presented.
Thank you. Counselor Dennehy?
Yes, I approve.
Okay, and I approve. And so there we go.
Okay, can I just uh ask that it's pending that there may be a small adjustment? So we're still looking at, like, we're not sure that the dues and subscriptions is quite right. And they did take out our entire miscellaneous, which we never use it, but we keep it there just in case something comes up. And so we might ask to, you know, put a couple hundred dollars back into it. We're talking really small dollars here.
I was going to say, you're talking like ten percent or like, like less than ten percent of the total budget, so yeah, totally fine with that.
Yeah, more like one percent, less than one percent.
Yeah, that's a, that's a rounding error.
Right, okay, that's all we're asking.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, um, excellent. So we are moving right along on the agenda. Um, so uh, Christine, uh, Christine, you've recorded that we, the Audit Committee, have unanimously approved, yada, yada. Okay, thank you. Um, then I will be reporting this to council on July twenty-sixth. Our next meeting is August twenty-eighth, and I have to add something about our September meeting. Um, we need to reschedule our September meeting because it falls on Yom Kippur. So, what do we want to do there?
Um, Chair, I can, um, I mean, you're welcome to take feedback, but I can also work out um, an email poll um, from there, because I, I do have to check um, offline about um, other conflicts with, with the council members, you know, their schedules.
Yeah.
And just this room, because we're now subject to OPMAs and I am tech hosting in the building, and that is, there are other people using this room, so there's that too.
Okay.
But I'm recognizing that the August twenty-eighth um will be out.
No, August twenty.
Sep- you said September, sorry.
Yeah.
September twenty-fifth?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, and then I'm going to throw out, since you brought up September, um, October meeting, there's a conflict due to a budget workshop, so we'll be looking at October and December due to Christmas. So the rest of the year is going to be a challenge.
So, why, Christine, could I ask you to put together some poll options for um, October and September then?
Of course.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, and, and that'll give you a chance to just kind of do all that, that kind of thing at the same time, right?
Mm-hmm.
Because it would be the twenty-third of October, so I gotta wonder, is the thirtieth, would that work? You know, the last Monday.
That overlaps into more budgets, so I'm going to have to look at.
Oh, does it? Okay, yeah, take a look. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
Um, I appreciate the advance notice.
Okay. Um, yeah, if, um, I don't know what y'all's schedule are, but if we could move the Audit Committee to um, hang on. Pushed, um, to the third Monday. Um, I don't know how that works for anybody, but if it could be included in the poll, I think if we could do third Monday, that that would clear up September, October, and possibly even December.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, Quinn, I'm sorry, Quinn, please go ahead, because you're doing that polite raising the hand thing.
Yeah, no, we're inside. Um, I don't want to throw a wrench in, in planning as well. I'm going to be out of the country August twenty-eighth, and I can't remember it, is, are two council members required for quorum in this committee, or is it okay that? Okay, so that, that doesn't affect if, if I'm out on August twenty-eighth, okay.
But you can also um, just choose a proxy from among the other counselors.
Oh, great, okay. Thanks. I'll, I'll see who I can rope in.
Oh, I don't know if you can have a proxy in our bylaws.
Oh, okay.
As, as long as, as long as you all have quorum, I'm, I'm fine with, with that, um, i- if everybody else is.
Okay.
Yeah, sounds good.
Thank you for knowing our bylaws better than we do.
Yeah.
I don't know, is what I said, is I don't know if you can do that.
We need to check the bylaws.
Christine, please go ahead.
Am I correct that we can proceed with the August twenty-eighth meeting date? That one is um, working well for the committee. So so aside from the poll, I do need to, to put out there that if the Audit Committee wishes to change its schedule, whether it's for the rest of the year or here forward, we would need to do that officially at a business meeting. So, I would, I could do the preliminary poll, but then we could get closer and land on that date, but that would probably happen at the August meeting. We would have that official conversation.
Right.
Okay.
Well, Public Safety just moved their date.
Mm-hmm.
So it really depends on all of the rest of you. If the third Monday works, great. And if it doesn't, we'll work out, you know, we'll work it out. Okay, um. Say, I'd like to move to adjourn this meeting unless someone has something for good of the order or future conduct of these Audit Committee meetings.
I'm good, thank you.
So, um, for the foreseeable future, we will be conducting Audit Committee meetings as hybrid meetings. There will be, um, you can attend at the Norm Dix Building, three forty-five Sixth Street in Bremerton, sixth floor council conference room. Um, or you can attend remotely. If the public wishes to attend at Norm Dix, they are welcome to attend, but there is no opportunity for public input. And with that, if only I had a little hammer, um.
That was a sign about that.
Again, with grateful thanks to our auditor and to Christine Grenier, our council staff. I could, forgotten your title for the moment, Christine. Um, thank you and good night.
Good night, thanks, everybody.
Bye.
Bye-bye.
Hey, Marwan and La.
Bye.
Bye.
Whoa, looking good, sir. Okay, have a good night.
Have a good night. Bye, everyone.
Night, everyone.